Been nominated by your peers and/or members of the public for your exemplary work. Mrs. Scales cares about her students and goes above and beyond to help her students get the help that they need. If a student is stuck on a math problem, she will stay on it until you better understand how to do it. So again, congrats and thank you very much. And would you like to add? Thank you so much. And Laura Lee will take your photos. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, sorry about that, guys. Now we'll go on to, um... I was just gonna continue with the board of the...
Oh, sorry.
No, 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 no. I mean, just saying that I messed up earlier. Okay, so we can go ahead with, um, the principal, whoever would like to go first.
I'll go first. Proud neighbor of mine here, I've actually known this sucker here longer than my wife. She grew up in the same little apartment as I grew up in, Lewisburg as well, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's see here, a birthday shout out. Miss Allison's birthday is today, so. Our band and choir performed at the Marsh Group Music Festival last week, and it's been at least a decade. Both our band and choir got straight one ratings. So they're performing a panel of three judges who are evaluating, they'll communicate before they score them. And again, five straight ones from all six judges in combination, so that's really impressive. Our choir was one of just four choirs that received the one that is really tough group to perform for that day, which I think said even stronger about how well they did. I included information on graduation in the board report, so we will have one more meeting before graduation. I wanted to make sure that you had that early. Again, if you think you're not going to be there, let us know, because we'll arrange the stage just a little bit different, so it's more comfortable for everybody. And then I want to make you aware of April 23rd. If you see helicopters flying around town, the Army National Guard's gonna be here. We've got several teachers and staff that are participating in that. And that is also our scholarship night at high school. So Jimmy could probably tell you the number from last year, I don't remember off the top of my head, but our kids are blessed. Our kids are blessed to go to school in this community, because it is a lot of money that's aimed at that. April 23rd, 7:00 PM, I believe, in the, um, could be 6:00.
6:30.
6:30, thank you. Yep.
Activity wise, we're all running in the spring. Fine, I think we turned a corner on the weather, it's been some cold evenings up in the ball field a couple times. Last Friday night, we hosted Shenuke Golf Field, I think it's the first time, too, golf field for you. Had a huge crowd up there. Shenuke actually traveled very well, I was actually surprised at how well they came up. But, um, so anyway, that's going well. Baseball is eight and one, seven and one, somewhere in there. I don't know where we rank, because there's two or one kind of big team, and then there's like five or six of us. Yeah, that one loss. So might be able to host a regional, might not, we've got a long way to go before that happens. And then Prong, we had Prong over the weekend, and that all went very well. The walk-in, I know the parents come in, they do a great job every year, station that, and then, um... I don't know, we really like the way it is, you know, everybody gets their shiny moment in the spotlight, and we take the weather factor out of it, and, um, but Prong was fun. We had a, I thought, a really good turnout at Prong. We even had the police stop by. We didn't ask them to. They even had fun, so they were just hanging out, and so that was, that was pretty awesome.
I'll go for the middle school, and congrats, very well deserved. I told them I wasn't gonna point out that five out of the six last employees of the month have come to the middle school, but I decided to say that you made a plan, you knew you'd type it before me. So, um, we just finished up state assessments, they went really well. We had really a lot of fun actually getting ready for the state assessments, had a little fun with the video. The staff were good sports. I went around and asked them to give me some advice for the kids, give them a little pump up. They had no idea that I had Snapchat filters on my video while I was videoing them. Until about halfway through, I think it trickled out, the rumor got out that that's what we were doing. But it was super fun, and everybody had a really good time with that, the kids loved it. So they did a really good job with that. We have our first home middle school track meet tomorrow, so if you've never seen Herding Cats, come watch. It's a lot like that, but we did a really good job running that off. So as much help as we can get on that is great, everybody tends to volunteer, so that's really good. Um, and then also, we have our grade level scholars pool coming up, and that's super fun. All the different grade levels get a chance to compete against each other, so we're gonna be tight with that.
All the next. We did something similar on April 1st, I don't know if you saw the school news that our staff did. We played a prank on the students, and the students do a Friday news show, but it was put on by the teachers, and they had a lot of fun with that. And then, I don't know if you saw on Facebook, our kid win group competed at state earlier in April, and they qualified for worlds, so they will be traveling there at the end of May, so that's exciting news. And then we held our boys' bash and our girls' gala this past week. We did them back-to-back, Thursday night and Friday night, and Nancy Hanneman, shout out to her. She does a fabulous job, kept them busy, I mean, parents when they leave, they're like, that was a workout. Wow, I'm wearing shorts next year when I come. But we had over 150 RSVPs for the girls, so if you can imagine, 150 girls plus their significant other, or not significant other, but their one guest that they get to bring, it was a packed house.
Cottonwood news, in the March, we brought kindergarten roundup. We are down a little bit of kindergarten in the past, but we have currently 79 kindergarteners that we have rounded up, and hoping to round up some more for August. And just want to brag on our Lego League at Cottonwood. They competed Saturday, March 29th, at Marshall South High School, and that was a big event. I got to go watch them, part of the day, compete, and get to see robotics in action in the high school. Kids did a great job of helping out with that as well. We had several teams, brought four different teams, Pantherbot teams, and they got different awards. A poster award, core values award, challenge award, but did a fantastic job. They researched and designed innovative ways to explore the ocean, and they, each team built a model that reflected their ideas, which included coating a submarine, artificial habitat, and other creative elements that they came up with for ocean discovery. And they just did a great job. A special thank you to Mary and Christie Hanger for their volunteer hours and time that they put in all through the school year, and then that Saturday as well with those kids. Really just was a neat experience for those kids, and fun to be part of, get to see that, so thanks to them.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our information and discussion items. So first up, we have our special board meeting, and it's our last one of the school year this year, and it is April 29th at the Adult Education Building. And just note that this one is a little bit later, it's 7:30 AM start time, so. Hope everybody can make that, those special meetings are always really insightful. And then next, we have the Paola High School Sports Passes, and Darren is gonna talk to us a little bit about that.
It's just coincidental.
Accidents begin. I don't even know what she's pulling up, so. So I've got, you know, all kinds of numbers. Across the league, there's, I think there's two of us that do not issue passes. The rest issue, depending on where you're from, anywhere from $75 up to $180. Some do families, most do individuals. I think probably the school that, if we would choose to do this, I would model after, it would probably be Spring Hill. They do an individual pass only, and the reason why is it's, it's kinda hard to, I guess, dictate or to identify what a family is anymore. And when we have people that maybe aren't the most honest people, and they come up, and yeah, these are my 10 kids who are spending the night, that's not what the pass is intended for. Like anything else, you know, with the cost of everything going up, the reason the league voted this year to raise prices is because over the last couple of years, and we're on about a two-year cycle with every sport, the officials want more because it's costing them more to drive. They don't get paid mildly, they just get paid a flat fee. Each sport is different, you know, ranging from an $80 night football official up to a basketball official that does two games and gets paid, what, $160, $170 a night. A basketball night basically costs $1,000 in officiating fees. And that's just, just by the time you figure up all the officials that we have, we have seven officials that night. So anyway, as the inflation goes up, and as everything else gets more expensive, you know, that, I mean, I hate to say your business, but we have to pass that off to consumers sometime. And like I said, we have not, as a league, raised prices, I believe, you know, now 15 years, I think. Forever it was five degree, and the last time they raised prices, it went five and five, and the three were students, and it raised to five, and in my head, I'm like, why did you raise the kids? Because we don't charge our high school kids anyways, and very few high school kids travel. I'm not making gateoff high school kids. Maybe for a substate or something like that, but half of that, or 70% of that money goes to KESHA anyway. And so that's kinda what we're looking at as far as that goes. There's two different ideas that we kinda came up with. One I got from a Western Kansas school with a Colby, with a Colby. They have a punch card pass, which I thought was interesting, and we kind of experimented with some old league passes, the plastic passes that you go to, and they punch pretty easy. And we can actually order thinner cards, and it basically like the old Subway, and you just punch it. One idea, a couple ideas that I talked with Matt about, is having a 10 punch and a 20 punch pass. And the numbers on that would be less than paying full price. So if you bought a 20 punch pass, you'd end up saving roughly, get you, I think it was, off the top of my head, I think like one free game by the end of the pass, it averages out, to about $6. A 20 punch pass would be $120 bucks, 10 punch pass would be $100. And so, and I would make them, or I would recommend that we make them not by the year, so that if you had, you know, two punches left over, you just carried, I'd just order 500 of the same card, and then they'd just all be the same. Or if your kid graduated and you were left with, you know, hey, I got three punches on this, I just give it to somebody. Because once they're punched, they're punched, and you can't use them. If you wanted to, you know, if your son or daughter is having a sleepover, and you had 10 kids that were coming to with you to the game that night, you wanted to punch all 10 of them on there, that's up to you. I don't have to, if you did something like that, you don't have to worry about passes being handed back through the fence, which we had this year at the Lewisburg game. We had several Lewisburg students passing passes back through the fence, so they could all come in free for the football game. That's always a big concern. I'd rather put them on plastic, because that's a little bit harder to duplicate than just paper or even card stock, which we would have people do. The other idea, and what Spring Hill does, is they sell an individual pass, and it's all on GoFan. I don't know if you guys have heard of GoFan. GoFan's an electronic ticketing site. KESHA uses it for their postseason. We had it, I haven't gotten into it yet, some schools have dabbled into it. And so you, you basically, it's just, it's no different than, I guess, we own StubHub or Ticketmaster. You go out and you can buy individual tickets to games, or you can buy a season pass. Spring Hill, that's the only place they sell their individual passes. You can make one transfer on the pass, so if I bought four passes for my family, I can transfer them one time. It goes to their phone, their app, and that way you're not transferring passes around the community. And then it's simply, you have it on your phone, you walk up, there's a little green thing, and the gate person taps it, and in they go. Now there, of course, just like Ticketmaster or StubHub, there's a fee associated with that as well. So if we sold a pass for X amount of dollars, there's going to be a fee tacked onto that, that goes on to the consumer as well. Spring Hill, actually, their first year they did this, they ate the fee, and then, and that was like for single game tickets. They decided that wasn't a really good idea, because it is like a dollar, I wanna say like a $1.32 per transaction, and so you're talking a lot of games there. Where a pass like that would come in handy would be basically for families that have multi-sport kids. By the time, I'll use the Curly family, because I know Jase is a three-sport athlete. By the time Curly would get around to spring, they're basically going to baseball games for free, because they've attended so many other events. I would steer clear of, I guess, what you'd say, if we did the punch card, it's easy. I don't have to worry about seasons, I don't have to worry about sports specific. GoFan is so, you can set it up however you want to, individual games, season, year long. What Spring Hill does with, excuse me, with their pass is they set it up for a year, and if you buy it in January, it costs the same, they don't prorate it, it costs the same amount as it did in August. And they don't, there's no refund on that, and it's only good till the end of the year. So I think, personally, I think those are the two easiest options to go with. Again, for, especially for my gate people, those of you that come in and out, we have different gate people all the time, so it's kinda hard, a lot of times, they may or may not know, you know, who has the passes, or, oh, I don't have the pass tonight. Well, you know, you gotta have it to get in. The nice thing about punch pass, you can give that to your kids. The nice thing about GoFan is it's on their phone, and you can transfer it to the phone, and so they have that. So that's kinda some background knowledge, kinda gives you some options to look at, or to talk about or think about, and then just let us know which way you wanna push forward with that.
Does anyone have any questions?
Is there a difference between the first two graphics that you, that are in here? Like one is black and gold, one is just white?
I don't know what you're looking at.
Oh, okay.
No, it was just like a mock. One showing 20, one showing 10.
Yeah, and I did, like, this was, this would be probably the thickness that we would go for, because it's easier to punch, it's not very, yeah. Now, the big thing is, you gotta be careful, because you don't want that ripping up somebody's jeans. And so we would come out, it would be something like this, where we'd have the little panther heads, just kinda like Subway, had their little sandwiches. We'd put them in deep enough to where hopefully our ticket takers would punch on the panther head and not on the corner where you're gonna get a, get a little bit of a sharp edge there. And then what we would do is we would sell these through the school. I don't, I don't wanna necessarily get into selling them at the gate, because now you're dealing with, you know, more money, and again, gate workers that may be there for one game. But that's something, you know, they could come into the high school, they could purchase as many or few as they wanted at one time. And then, I mean, you can see when you're getting ready to run out, and then you can go get some more. And if you get to the end of the season, you have a one-sport kid, is it worth it for me to go buy another one? Nah, just, just pay whatever, and go forward. And when you stop and think about it, if you have a kid on multiple levels, then, you know, that would benefit too. The league is actually, we're going to back off the JV price, back down to the original price of $5 to get in, because it is a JV night, or I should say standalone sub varsity night. So JV football, freshman football, like we hosted JV baseball up there the other night. I didn't charge, because we had other school come in, I didn't wanna get in the mess of all of that. So standalone sub varsity nights would be back down to the original price that they have been forever.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you very much.
Is there a preference on, is it something you wanna move forward with? And be, if you do, is there a preference on the electronic GoFund, or?
GoFan.
Or GoFan, or, or the punch card? Because it's not a, it's not a situation that you wanna vote. I mean, it really needs to be won or...
And I'll be honest, GoFan is probably something we're gonna look at moving to. It won't replace cash at the gate, but it is, I'm kinda timing myself out because of my age, but younger generations coming up, it's hard, you know, people don't wanna carry cash anymore, they don't carry cash anymore. And so it's just an option for especially younger generations that they don't carry cash. But we have a meeting, I don't know, set up in May, I think, with GoFan, the league does, just to kinda, here's, here's what it can do, and things like that, so. Probably moving towards that, but what we do with it is what we choose to do with it.
So would the electronic one be like a punch card, or would it just be assigned to that one person?
Well, it's assigned to one person.
Okay, so if I had like a group of 10 kids, I couldn't like scan it 10 times to get punch, so they kinda function different?
Yeah, so it's just, it's basically like, you, when you do a Ticketmaster on your phone, and you may have the tickets on your phone, but they scan it, and once it's scanned, then it's good. And what, like I said, it'll come up, so last Friday at Shenuke, it would say, um, varsity baseball versus Shenuke. There's the green dot, once our gate worker hits the green dot, it goes away, and now you're ready for Tuesday versus Tongadoxi, or whatever.
So you don't buy it in bulk, like you would the punch card?
You could, and that's, that's what I'm saying about GoFan, is you, we could set it up, there's, I hate to say infinite amount of weight you can set up, but I can set it up, buy single game tickets, I could set up to buy baseball season tickets, set up to buy family passes, I set up to buy individual passes. And that's why Spring Hill went just individual passes, it was just one thing, here's the price for each individual pass. And then if you were buying an individual, let's say you're family of four, so you're buying four individual passes, they come to your phone, you can transfer them one time, and then it would transfer to husband, son, daughter. And then once it's on there, then they can't send it to somebody else.
Or she could leave it on, all four on her phone, if she knows that kids are gonna always be with her, and...
Believe, I believe, I believe so, but I don't know, because you have...
My wife's showing my...
But you have to log in. You have to log in for that, so. And, and, and my guess is, you can do a family, you can do a family pass like that, but again, then we get into how many people are you bringing in on your family pass, and my gate workers don't know.
Right.
So that's why, that's why I would stay, the punch cards are nice, because everybody has that. The individual pass is nice, because you're not, you're not sharing, unless you give up your phone to somebody.
Right. Is Spring Hill pleased with?
I'm sorry?
Is Spring Hill pleased with the GoFan?
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, it's like anything else, their, their idea, they were gonna have a pass gate, or an electronic gate, and then a cash gate, and he said, yeah, it went out the window the first night, because nobody could read the sign that says, electronic pass is here, cash here, and he said, just so, he said, but yeah. We used it, like I said, we used it at regional wrestling, and because KESHA, you could go on to KESHA and buy a ticket for that, and it went fine. The only thing I ever worry about is making sure you have cell signal wherever, because if that's where your ticket is, and you can't get it pulled up, that's the only, that's the only thing I worry about with it. But again, I'm, I'm the older generation, too.
Yeah, but you know, like, if you have a, if you go, are going to a concert, and your tickets are on Ticketmaster, they say the exact same thing. Make sure that your tickets are downloaded on your phone. Because if you don't have signal, or you can't get, you're not gonna...
Yeah, you're not getting it.
No, you're not, you're not getting it. Back to Christian's question, if you have, like, if you, if they came to her, or they came to me, like with the Ticketmaster pass, like you just flip, they scan them as they come off your phone. Do you think that that's not...
I don't think you can do that with individual passes, because the individual pass is assigned to an individual. And they're not, from what I have seen, it's not a, like, when you go on Ticketmaster, you get a physical ticket on your phone. It's not that. When you pull it up, it's just, here's the event, and there's a green, just a green circle, and you just tap that, and that accepts it. So, again, I can find all that out, but in my mind, I don't believe that you can do, you could have, because you'd have to log on to four different accounts.
Right, okay.
So if we did the online app Fan...
GoFan, yeah.
Would you also be able to just buy cash tickets individually?
Oh, yeah, yes, and I don't, I don't think, in a community like ours, I don't think you're ever gonna get away from that, because, you know, grandparents and stuff, my dad's not gonna pull his phone out, he's gonna have his money clipped in his cash. So, you know, now, way down the road, 20, 30 years from now, and none of us have to worry about it, it might be all of that, but I think you still gotta have a cash option, especially for people come off. Spring Hill, when they first started, they had a kiosk where you could actually go over and buy them there, but they took that out, because it was just kinda cumbersome, and then people had questions, and I don't have time for gate people to walk somebody through that, so.
What's the upfront cost for like the scanning and stuff that you'd have to have the gate for it? I mean, you'd have to have that equipment, right, or is it...
No, no, it's, because that's what I thought too, it's all on your phone, it's just a tap. So the cost, the cost goes to you, the consumer.
So the gate person at the gate would be tapping it and seeing, okay.
So don't give it to your kid to tap it or something. Because once it's tapped, it's tapped.
Yeah, once it's tapped, it's tapped. And I don't, and honestly, the way it goes too, is that ticket doesn't become live until that day of the, like, you can't access next week's ticket until the day of, so.
Your preference?
I like the electronic, but it's just...
And I kinda think if we're gonna be moving to that in the future, it sounds like it would be a smoother process, but I'd be open to either, I think those are pros and cons.
I think I'd prefer the electronic, probably, but I think the point of it, if, refresh my memory, but the point of it was to kinda save somebody like Curly, who are going to every game, all for three different sports, or something, or somebody who has a bajillion kids. So I don't, I guess the question is, I don't know whether, whether it would be a fan, whether you would do the family thing with the electronic thing or not, whether there's still the ability to, to do the family pass, to save some of these parents who have to go to three sports.
Yeah, you would have the ability, the way I understand it, you have the ability to set it up however you want to set it up.
And then is there a savings if you buy a certain amount, do you know, or?
The savings, I believe, would come on the fee. So if you, when you buy an individual game ticket, there's a fee for that transaction. If you buy a pass, there's a fee for that transaction, but it, but it's just, the fee is the fee. Um, so if the fee is a dollar thirty-two, then it's a dollar thirty-two tacked on to the individual game, or it's a dollar thirty-two tacked on to the transaction of buying the individual pass. Does that make sense?
But we could set the price for the league, for the league pass, for the season pass.
You would set, yes, we would set, yes.
We, we would do that, or the high school would do that.
Yeah, that, so like, right now, if you, we, we go to schools to have it, like, Spring Hill, you can purchase your ticket ahead of time, so your seven dollar ticket actually ends up costing, I believe, like, just individual game, like, eight dollars and thirty-two cents, something like that.
But I think what, if we, if you had the season long pass, we would determine how much that is.
Yeah.
Whether it's two hundred, three hundred, whatever, then they would pay that, and it'd be three hundred plus the dollar thirty-eight, or whatever.
Correct, right, yeah. And that, that, that's, I had some schools, like, when we started looking at numbers, there were several schools, like, I'm not charging them that. I'm losing a lot of money on that, and it's like, yeah, kind of are. Um, like, once ago, I think, we were charging fifty bucks for the whole year for family pass, and when they sat down, they looked at the number, I mean, they were losing just a thousand dollars, you know, on, on one family, so, um, you take that times what could be a lot of family, setting up a lot of money.
But the recommendation, I mean, is to really try to have a, the passage would be by individual versus a family, because, I mean, unfortunately, what we, what we know as a family unit is so different now, and, and, um, and we don't ever want to put our gate workers in a situation where, you know, that, because that's not what they're, I mean, they're they're taking, move through and so forth, so. And this would just be for home events, this isn't, this isn't for like away events, it's also not for, like, our invitation, I mean, we could make it better, individual, like, invitational tournament, or any KESHA activities that we sponsor.
Postseason, postseason.
So Darren, there's no way on the electronic version, then, that you could say, I just wanna buy sixty tickets? And each time you, just like the punch card, but through the electronic, each time you tapped it, whatever, it went from having sixty on your phone to fifty-nine?
So the way I understand it, it would, it would suck to enter, I would enter in the entire schedule for the year. So you could go through, and you could purchase an individual ticket for every event that you wanted to go to, and it would be in your garage, ready to go when that day comes.
Right, what I was getting at is, like, the, the card, you would buy the card, and it'd have twelve punches on it. You don't care what game you use that, if you use them all together, is there a way to do that electronically, where you could go to one, let's say you go to one game, you've got five people with you that night, you just hit five punches?
No.
There's no way to do that part?
I don't believe it works that way.
Okay.
Right.
So if we wanted to do something like that, you're gonna have to go with the punch?
As far as I know, and I don't know all the details on the GoFan yet, but-
That would be interesting if it could do that, I think that would, that would be more like what Sean was saying, that would be-
Well, I can, I can see the benefit from, I mean, you have multiple kids, I mean, and you're, I mean, i- if you can buy a pass to, for two seasons, what it would cost for two seasons, and you can go to all three, I mean,
Yeah.
Um, I think you could even sell passes to people who don't go to as many games to help make up for what you lose, and-
Yeah, but this way, if you've got three kids going with you this night, and that only got two the next night, then you're-
And, and the other thing, too, is with our high school kids, we let our high school kids into our home events for free. Um, that's what their activity fee gets, then, their fifteen dollar activity fee gets in that, as long as they have their ID, because again, we have elementary people taking gates that haven't seen these kids in fifteen years. And so, they have to have, they have to show their ID to essentially get into our home, home events. And I'm not gonna sit there and say, I haven't, maybe let them into KESHA events for either, since I'm losing seventy percent of that game. They have, may not have, so, so, but, yeah, so that, again, I think the individual is a lot sooner, um, when you look at it that way, and just accept price. And, and honestly, most people aren't going to be casual fans to go out to, you know, if my kid plays football, I'm, and I don't have any daughters, I'm probably not going to go to a volleyball game, unless it's a big, you know, match or something like that. Uh, if my kid doesn't play basketball, I'm probably not gonna go to the basketball games. So it kinda evens itself all out.
And you said, when is, um, the league meeting, that they're gonna talk about what's coming up?
Well, our next one is, we just had one last week, so it'll either be May or June, and there's a couple of other things coming down, it doesn't affect the guys with the scheduling package and everything, so it's, yeah. But we could, if, if, either one, I mean, it could be implemented in August, and we just push out information ahead of time, and go from there.
So what I've, what I've heard is electronic is preference, especially if we can, if there's the ability, like the punch card feature, or whatever, that would be, that would be preference one. If that is not an option, which, I mean, we'll, I mean, we'll find out, but if that is not an option, preference two then would be electronic or the punch card. Electronic would be, as, as Darren described, individual, individual, um, accounts and so forth. Then one of the questions I think could, could be, is if you bought, say you have a family of four, and you have four tickets, can you just buy four tickets, and it's on one phone, so every time it loads, instead of being, that you just have four tickets on? So you could send it to your kid, but I sent, I sent one to my spouse, and I kept the two kids on, or whatever, so whenever I come through, then I, then I have, like, for every game, I have three for that, three tickets for that night versus, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be something we'd have to find out.
Yeah, like, like Phil was talking about, when you go, and you're, all the tickets are on my phone, to get into a concert, and they just scan it for-
So it's only good for that night, but I have three tickets for that, if I use it or not.
Or like, if you bought a family pass, and like, I've got one that doesn't have a cell phone, a kiddo, so his would have to be on mine.
Right.
So I don't know.
And that, that's what I have to find out.
Yeah, if I have to sign out of my account, it's like, it's-
But the family pass, too, would work different than the individual, so I would imagine you get X amount of taps on a family pass, and my guess is, you probably have to set that up ahead of time, where, you know, I can't, I'm not gonna have an infinite number of taps that way.
Well, and you're not gonna have four, he's gonna have five, I mean, I'm like, I feel like the-
I'm sure, I mean, it sounds like there's probably some solutions.
Yeah, and the cleaner thing with the individual is, you get them for one price, and it, and it, and it's there. The hard part with the family pass is what do you charge? Because now, instead of charging one person, you gotta remember you're charging three, four, or more, what's a fair amount for that, for either a season or for a year, so.
Alrighty, next up, we have our open forum, and we do have a few open forums this evening. And so, when I call your name again, you can come up to the podium and introduce yourself, and then you'll have your five minutes to, um, speak and share what you want to share. We won't be giving any feedback, I think we're all aware of how this works, so. Our first, um, open forum we have is Bethany Shannon. So let's just come on up, and whenever you're ready, she'll start the timer.
Good evening, members of the board. We've attended the three meetings to explain the importance of safe zones signs, and their impact on students at our high school. Today, I'm here to ask the question, how can we work together to ensure these signs are put back up? The petitions we have gathered and demonstrated clear support from the student body, and many levels of our community have reached out to express their backing of this cause. With the level of support in mind, I may ask, why can't you support this? I understand, I understand the concerns raised by pushing political beliefs into the issue it never should be. The signs simply represent a commitment to making all students feel safe, valued, and supported, and that should be shared priority for everyone here. You have the opportunity to show us that you genuinely care about the students of this community. You have the power to distribute, dis- distribute, distant, oh my gosh, to parents and families that value the well-being of their children. These signs represent the very commitment. They are a symbol of inclusive, and safety and support for those who need it most. I understand that this is a situation that is involved in ways no one hasn't anticipated, but in the core, a political platform to be pushed, we are asking for something that affects the real students, real kids like me, who need to know that the decision is being made, or in their best interest, that as board members are here to protect them. We want to feel safe in our school. Now, now, more than ever, it is critical to show our students that they matter. Mental health and issues, and suicides rate among young people in our community are significantly higher than others. This is not a statistic, this is a crisis. The removal of these signs are served to demonstrate feelings of exclusion and neglect. When the actions taken are not aligned with the needs of the students, it needs to be powerful and a harmful message. By going in such lengths to remove these science actions that appear to be established laws, it raises questions about what messages is really being sent. How do you think that makes me and other students like me feel? It leaves us questioning whether our voices are truly being heard, whether our safety is genuinely a priority. So, once again, I ask you, how can we work together to put these signs back up? What are the steps we can take to collaborate, to show our community, and especially our students, that we care? What can we do to assure the needs of our children, we are all here to serve, are, are being met? Thank you for your time.
Okay, and our second open forum is Elsie Blackmore.
Um, good evening. Since beginning this, I've been called the Essler twice by my classmates. Just the other day, I was in chemistry during a lab, and I was partnered with a boy I'm genuinely, generally friendly with outside of class. He has a reputation for being a bit disruptive, and when he greeted me, when I sat down with, what's up, the word. I looked at him, I told him that wasn't appropriate, and his response was, come on, it's just a joke. The teacher who overheard this said nothing. At our last advise, at our last meeting, while I was in advisory, another boy who saw my shirt loudly and intentionally said, God, I hate the word. Again, nothing was done, and the teacher heard it. This isn't about isolated incidents, this is about a stigma, it is about stereotypes. All of us in some way have been both victims, and at times, times unintentional, unintentional participants of these systems. But what matters is how we respond when we are confronted with them. There are five women on this board, and I'm inspired by the progress our community has made in electing women to positions of power. And I want to be clear, I'm not questioning anybody's qualifications, but I'm sure you are aware that there are people who will do so. Forty-eight years ago, if you had run for this board, you likely would have lost because of your gender. Thirty years ago, you would have just gained the right to vote. Less than a century ago, it was widely believed that women were inherently weaker, less capable, and unfit for leadership roles. Many justified those beliefs using holiday. But hate is just fear, fear rooted in insecurity and not understanding others, and history is always repeating itself. For thousands of years, women have faced discrimination justified by scripture. People of color have endured similar discrimination, until the nineteen sixties, black Americans, by the law, were considered less than. It was uncommon to walk into a Southern church, Catholic or Protestant, and hear a sermon that was up, that upheld slavery as a part of cultural identity. These issues were rooted in religious rhetoric and fear of those who were different. The discrimination that face, that is faced by my generation, especially in the LGBTQIA+ community, is not different. It's not new, and it's not acceptable. I could stand up here and speak at length about the policies you violated, including the Kansas Open Meetings Act and your own board regulations, I could remind you, but by enacting this ban, you betrayed your community's trust and sent a clear message to the students, that their safety, their future, and their lives do not matter to you, but that issue just feels redundant, because it seems clear you don't care about the policy. You legally enacted the ban under the IFA policy because you believe that you have a moral obligation to do so. You're discriminating against children who are nearly thirty years, years younger than you, because you feel you can't. Yet, in twenty twenty-three, Pope Francis said, being homosexual is not a crime. He called on Catholics and Christian communities alike to welcome the LGBTQIA+ individuals into the church, and he reminded us all that people are made in the image of God, and must be treated accordingly. When I first moved here, I attended Holy Trinity for two years. There, I was taught that the Pope is the closest confidant to God that we have on earth. I was taught that we as Christians are meant to be shepherds of God's people, and that we are to treat others the way we wish we treat it, because God lives in every single one of us, and we need to treat each other as if we would treat God. Not all Catholics follow the Pope, I know, I've seen it firsthand. At school, I also heard speech directed at LGBTQ individuals that was hateful. I heard offensive and degenerate and degrading comments about women. One teacher described Mexicans and Latino people as gross and incompetent, and I was ten years old. My grandmother is a first-generation Mexican-American, and she has dedicated her life to God's work, and I will never forget that, because it taught me that most people do not know God's word, just how to manipulate it. A school board member recently asked one of my friends via email if they thought it would be appropriate to display the Ten Commandments in our schools. Well, that's not the issue at hand, as someone who has experienced that firsthand for two years, attending a religious school, no, I do not think that it would be appropriate. But in a hypothetical world, if they were to be displayed, maybe it would serve as a reminder just how imperfect and flawed we all are. The students I mentioned at the beginning of this speech violate, violated what I've always been taught to be the most important rule, the golden rule, something I have learned at both public and private school, treat others as you would wish you treated. I mean, there's so many other problems that are facing the high school right now. The fact that we have unweighted grades for kids like me who take AP and college classes and try really hard, or the fact that in the boys' bathroom, we can't seem to keep the doors on, and when they finally do get on, they have to be locked, because we don't know, as almost eighteen-year-olds, how to use a bathroom. So, I ask you, do you agree with these boys at the beginning? Do you share their beliefs that it's acceptable to bully others because they're, because of ignorance, instead of asking questions and seeking to understand? Do you care about members of your community? Do you care about the future of this country and the young people who will be leading it? What side of history do you want to be on? Will you stand up for what is right, or will you continue to sit silently behind your desks, refusing to take accountability for your actions? Thank you.
And our last open forum is Stone Beekman.
My name's Steve Beekman, living thirty-three, two oh three West Three Twenty-Seventh Street, Viola. I have nothing to guess, you kids. But you're here to go to school to learn things, what are you learning? There's a whole world out there that's, needs all kinds of professional people, and you're all up here saying, oh, uh, I'm being discriminated against, I'm being called names. What are you gonna do when people call your name, when you go to, when you get out of school?
Um, excuse me, sir, can you address the board, please, that's what open forum is for.
Can you let me address her?
Address the board members.
Address, okay, well-
That's what open forum is for, thank you.
Well, I don't know why they need, these children need safe spaces, safe spaces from what? Being talked bad about, being called names, life is full of that, up until the day you die. You'll be called names if people don't like you, some people might even spit on your grave, because they don't like you. I don't know, you don't need a safe space in school, you're here to get an education. And, and all the adults in this room are taxpayers, and we pay for your education. And it seems like you're just wasting your time with these, um, LGBTQRS MS-13 stuff. There's no reason for that. I don't know if any of you girls are lesbians? Or wannabe lesbians? Do you even know what that means? Have you ever had any of that experience? Well, I hope not, no. So, anyway, I'd like to know. I'm pretty new on this safe space deal that they're talking about. That they don't need a safe space. The school board has rules and regulations, and the state has laws concerning the behavior of the children and what's allowed in the schools. And if you kids don't like it, just go ahead and graduate and move on. I guess that's about it.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. I think you all have severe psychological problems.
Sir, you're addressing the board, you're not addressing the kids.
All right, well, I address the board.
Okay, next up, we have some action items. We are asked to approve the 2025-26 KASB membership dues, and Matt is gonna talk to us a little bit later.
I don't have much to add, other than if there's questions. But this time of year, we... It's time for renewal of the Association, Association School Board's invoice. There's two invoices in front of you. One is for membership renewal for the 25-26 school year. Also includes an optional, what they call the Season Pass, which is an all-access. A lot of their trainings in it is covered underneath that. The second piece of that assistant, or that renewal is an invoice for what they, is referred to as the Legal Assistance Fund, and that is where they have the attorneys on-call that if there's questions from board members or administrators and so forth, that we can access and get legal advice at, under this cost, instead of having like a per diem through, you know, legal, outside legal firm. So, happy to answer questions. Kelly obviously sits as a regional vice president, sits on the board, and I know that she is very versed and can answer questions as well as.
Season passes that, like the online courses and things?
There are, yes. Now, there are a few pay-as-you-go that are outside of that, but there are a lot of virtual that are covered under the Season Pass, the trainings. Trying to think of others.
Let's see, it's in person.
Legal, I mean, there's legal 504, IEP training, a lot of different trainings and so forth.
How, like, how much, I guess if you were to do it like pay-as-you-go, would we meet the 1750? Would we exceed that? Like, how much, I guess I'm asking how much to be actually used the Season Pass?
Well, and it depends on, from year to year. So, if it's used quite a bit, then obviously it's a really good deal. If it's not used at all, obviously it's not. And part of it is dependent upon the number of board members that utilize it as well. I know it's for, for like me personally, you know, they have like a legal law updates and so forth, student discipline law. I don't go every year, I try to go every other year because I'm so... Trying to think of other things that I've come up.
I think there's one admission to a convention.
There is one, that is true.
Last year, Michelle's admission to the Congress was free because it's included as.
As part of.
As part of the season pass. Like, if we were just to buy a ticket to the convention, I guess I'm...
I think the convention's like $250.
And if you go to the website, it looks like there's a new clerk's workshop coming up, $150 per person to get to that. So, if we had three people though, $450.
Sure.
And that's just the total of costs.
Well, I think the trainings and the legality coverage and all of that is very well worth it. From my experience on the board, I think it's been really a solid, a really great resource.
I agree with the legal side of it, that I think it's a different invoice, so it's a different... I was just specifically talking about the Season Pass.
The membership dues.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if we use it to that extent and that, you know...
If you were to ask me, do we get our money's worth out of it, I would say yes, but that is not, I mean, that's not a holistic thing. I mean, has there been, I mean, I couldn't tell you, you know, did we get our money's worth this year out of it specifically? I, that part, I couldn't get into that detail without reviewing it. But overall, generally, do we utilize that service, yes.
I think something else to remember too is like, that's where we purchase our natural gas consortiums through KASB. So, obviously, if you don't participate, you're probably not participating in their consortium, buying your natural gas or doing something else. Those are other options, but we use their KASB program for that. Those who've been on board, remember a couple of years ago, we had a weather snap and there was a lawsuit, they took care of all of that. Saved the district a lot of money.
And I apologize, I don't have that off the top of my head.
No, that's okay, no, that's all right.
But we've done that, and that's why we started that part of it, because it is optional. And because we felt like that it was to our financial, it was a better deal.
To the benefit.
Also, might be some encouragement for board members to do some stuff, some trainings, too, because they have a plethora.
Right, we do offer lots of different trainings.
I know that, I mean, just because it was brought up, like, it already goes to the clerk one every year. So, I mean, I talk about it's board trainings and, you know, like administrative stuff, but, you know, we've had, we've had some where people that are wanting to maybe look at, you know, maybe getting into different administration or doing different things, you know, we've been able to bring them along.
I don't know, I personally think $15,000, whatever, we're real close to that anyways, I don't know. That legal expense, if we were paying a lawyer, a personal lawyer here inside the community, that we're keeping that taxpayer money inside the community instead of sending it out there, might be a better thing. It seems like a lot of money to me for that, but.
I will remind you that their attorneys only know school law.
I didn't, I didn't.
There is that side too, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
There is that, because I know that some are not as versed as others, so then you have to, they have to spend the time coming up to where, come at speed, where you can just haul and those people already know the answer.
They're getting at everything, I know.
Yeah.
I know, I'm just, my two cents, so.
No, I didn't take that.
I'd rather, I'd rather keep $15,000 inside the community because it's...
Any other discussion or comments or questions? Do we have a motion to approve the 2025-26 KASB membership dues? Are we just doing the dues right now and then we'll do the legal later, or is this all together?
I think it's all together.
Okay, and the legal assistance fund?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-26 KASB membership dues.
Is that the whole, all of it together?
Yeah. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the membership dues and the legal assistance fund. All of those in favor, please raise your hands to vote. Five, okay. All of those opposed and two. Okay, and next up, approve open enrollment information for 2025-26, and Matt has some stuff for us.
So, this format is very similar to what's out there, it is the same format. Part of the open enrollment requirements that before May 1st, that were to have, I'm just, to have a recommendation and then to the Board of Education, outlining enrollment numbers and what we think our capacity could be for the, for the open enrollment period. Now, a reminder, the open enrollment period is actually open. We take, under this statute, we take enrollment, open enrollment for next year from January 1 through June 15. And then after June 15, then we notify them, I believe it's, if I remember right, it's July 1. We need to notify them or maybe July 15. Our capacity, the numbers, I've updated the numbers because of where our enrollments are. I mean, we have the capacity for open enrollment. This is obviously, part of this is also making sure that they know that it's, you have to be in good standing. So, the good standing part is, you know, we've talked about before, it's the same, it's, you know, that your attendance is good, you know, you're up to date on your grades and your behavior and so forth, so that part doesn't change. This is, this is really trying to show us what our, what our goals are, like district enrollment goals by class. K-5, it's like by section, if you will. Secondary, it's more from per grade level. We have more information here than what's required. Talking about, you know, some of our current enrollments for special programs. And that's just more information, just to let people know. For instance, like you see, it'll say virtual learning, K through 5, it says zero, 6, 7, and 8, it's two. And then we have some, we have to buy seats or, and so that, part of that comes in. Those aren't necessarily card numbers all the time, but we try to, we try to give information, hey, this is what our enrollment looks like. You know, if it's a high school, like HVAC, it shows that we have total five seats, we have six kids that have booked to enroll in it, so we actually have a negative. And so, how some of this happens, like, when everybody gets their enrollments, then like through, for our HVAC through Neosho County, we may have more requests, another district may have less, and so, I won't say we horse trade, but if there's a seat available, that we can try to get them in. So, that's why there's a negative, just showing that we have more requests and capacity. So, that's it. I'd be more than happy to answer questions, this is the same as what's out there right now, it's just the updated for next school year and the numbers.
Did we fill all the spots last year of the open enrollment?
No, no. I mean, and honestly, we had more requests outside of the open enrollment window than what we did inside. We'll have, we'll have people, I think total, we had five or six that actually asked during that open enrollment window. We had more than that, like, you know, end of July, 1st of August or whatever. And we tried to accommodate all of those, and we use the same rules, even though we wouldn't have to, but we use the same rules in a minute's bit.
I motion to approve the open enrollment information for 2025-26.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve open enrollment information for 2025-26, all of those in favor? Next up, we are asked to approve 2025-26 rates and fees, and that's Matt.
So, what you have in front of you is, what's highlighted in yellow would be what's different. The breakfast and lunch fees, the recommendation is to increase each by a dime. The secondary, it was previously, in previous years, it was like, there was a K-5, and then a 6, 8, and a 9, 12. The 6, 8, and the 9, 12 were different costs, and so, it would be more for that middle school age. Why are we consolidating it? Because the portion sizes are very similar, and so, the cost is the same. So, it was trying to streamline this down a little bit. We have not raised our food services, Jimmy and I went back and it's been the same for five years. And so, we've just, the next item is actually contracted gentleman Tomper, just that we have been able to make it work. Now, we're running in the red a little bit, and so, it's, we never try to make money off, we always wanted to try to be, you know, break even, knowing that some years we make money and some money grows, and so, like this year, okay, it's, we're gonna lose money, but it all evens out over time. Some of the money that is, that does come in, does help with some of the, for instance, when we need a food service delivery truck, when that's time to replace, that will be a cost from the food service department. So, that's lunch fees. Class fees is looking at, and trying to put some of these together. Welding and baking and pastry, to be honest with you, that was just class we missed, we didn't get it on there. Culinary and is putting that together with the rising cost of food, welding rods and so forth. You may look at intro to welding and go, okay, well, that's half of what welding is, what's the difference? Intro to welding is a semester class, and so, it's just a semester versus a year. The related arts fee, that helps with the, some of the related arts, art supplies for, and related art, they call related arts, it's the electives at the middle school, so that's what we're talking about, elementary, we call them specials, right? So, but that related arts, that's some art supplies that also covers like our STEM lab and so forth, and that's actually going from 13 to $15 is the request. And then the other thing that we didn't highlight in yellow, but it would actually be on the second page, and this isn't, this isn't something that we collect, but with that pay ridership that we started at as a semester, what was approved and talked about was $175 for the first child, $100 for the second child, and then each additional was zero. That would be for what the cost would be or proposed for both semest, first semester and second semester would be the same. However, if you paid at the beginning of the year and enrolled for the entire year, then there would be a $25 break off that. So, to try to help with some administrative stuff and so forth. The downfall of that is if somebody moved during the part of the year they paid for something that maybe they wouldn't have used the entire year for, but most, that doesn't happen very often. And/or if they're thinking about that, we would, you know, they would know to just pay last semester. We, Kansas Central School Bus takes care of that, so really on this, we would be kind of saying, hey, this is, we're blessing this, if you would, we agree with this, they, it would be on them to take care of all of that piece. And we have, we've included in this document really as much for historical perspective, so that way, we know from year to year, this, it would be on that document. So, more than happy to answer questions in regard to the proposed district fees and rates.
Are there any questions or discussion?
I motion to approve the 2025-26 rates and fees.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all of those in favor of approving the 2025-26 rates and fees, please raise your hand. Okay, next, we're asked to approve the Tahar contract agenda.
So, our food service management contract is actually a five-year contract that is renewable, or it's a five-one-year contracts, if you will. So, the contract's the same, but what you look at is the cost, and that is part... And, and that is um, part of the original contract, that the, the meals can increase or their charge can, can increase by, it, it's not just the CPI, it would be what they call, um, it's a CPI for food away from home. There's something that's specifically for that and it's always measured from February to February. And so this year, that, um, that increase is three point seven percent. And so the, the cost for um, for meals, for like a student, this is what we get charged for, like a student, lunch is two dollars and forty cents and for every breakfast is two dollars and sixteen cents. What is not then included, because you may go, well, but we charge more, we charge, that's what the actual meal costs. And then all of our labor that, that are on our side, then, you know, has to be paid for out of that. And then if the labor is on their side, then the addition, the very bottom of this document says additional fee per meal for employment transition, so um, that's point zero seven six cents. So seven and a half cents per meal, then is on top. So if it's one employee, it's seven and a half cents. If they had two, two employees, that's, that's how that's figured in. So again, that reflects that um, three point seven percent. And as you can see, we're in, actually into a thousandth of a, of a cent to figure that out. And they've been, they've been good to, to work with.
Any questions or discussion?
I motion to approve the Tahoe contract agenda for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the Tahoe contract, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Approve capital outlay, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, general project. And techno, okay, so, and this is all one thing, technology project, Jimmy's got some info for us on that.
Yeah, so of course, there's a lot of information in board docs with all the details. I'll kind of just walk through a few highlights of all the things that are out there and summarize through the discussion tonight. And we did print copies of the two big lists, the general project list and the technology list. So you have those in front of you, it's the same thing that's online. So for capital outlay, um, we budget that every year. So of course, the budget year approved last July had eight mills in there. And so we collect that money throughout the year and then we actually spend it the year following. So we're always dealing with known quantities. So this revenue that we're talking about is money that's already been levied, um, this budget year. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, the year we're in, that budgeted tax revenue, just the local tax revenue piece, uh, was two million fifty-eight thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars. That was the estimate from the budget documents out on the website for the eight mills levied. Now that is only local property tax, it does not include what I call non-tax revenues. So interest goes into capital outlay, as we talked in past, and facility rental fees go into capital outlay. There's a budgeted amount for those, but this is the tax component piece of that. For this school year, we received a zero dollars in state aid. So again, you've heard me say multiple times how our state aid has been decreasing every year. This is just showing that continued decrease in capital outlay. And so this year, we received no, no state aid for capital outlay. Last year, it was a hundred and fifty thousand sixty-two dollars. So again, that's that continued shift. It's, it's not state aid, which all taxpayers pay into the state as well, but this is now a hundred percent local burden. You see the category summaries out there, that's something we added a few years ago. They're summarized two different ways, same information, just sliced and diced differently. So there's a list out there by alphabetical, uh, the categories that we, the broad categories we put the projects into. And then there's one by dollar amount, which to me is, is more helpful with the alphabetical, just a quick reference, if you want to know what a floor can cost. Don't have to go through the numerical list. The general project budget, as you can see in there on, on the big spreadsheet that we've listed, there's forty seven items listed there. And again, some of those are kind of combined for space. But those total one million seven hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. And then you've got the technology list, that's the other one that has some blue on it. The blue is the bid we're gonna approve later in the agenda. The technology bids for those or the projects, there's twenty-six items on that list, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. Again, that's stated in the agenda as well. So the total of those is two million thirty thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Just point that out, go back again to the revenue I mentioned, two million fifty-eight thousand, this is proposed expenditures, two million thirty thousand. So any expenditure over twenty thousand dollars has to be bid out unless it's purchased from either a state bid or a purchasing cooperative. Some of the things on here, just for space, we've added together. So if they look more than twenty thousand dollars, they may not be, because they're separate individual quotes and projects. But again, just for space, so you don't have to three mile long the spreadsheet, some of those were combined. But again, as I mentioned, the funds we levy, kind of in arrears, we levy it and then we spend it. So this is known money that's already been collected, paid by taxpayers this year, we'll spend it starting July one of next year. We'll start a little early, so we're gonna have to approve capital outlay technology a little later tonight. So I put in my report too, the fund balance ebbs and flows, but again, that's where we have money for contingency and things. And again, it grows throughout the year and then we spend it. So right now, you'll notice in the financials, there's about five point nine million dollars in capital outlay fund. In board docs too, visible for public as well, there's some information in there that we thought might be helpful for you. That I'm calling maps or locations or photos and all the things like the asphalt, the carpet and floor and the HVAC, concrete and roofs. And when we're talking about where those are, you kind of refer back to that, where you've seen that. A lot of those things you've seen firsthand as we did the building tours, so you've got to see those too. Scott T. Darder is here tonight, Director of Maintenance, Scott's first time through this process. Here to answer questions as any building representative. Tom, of course, is back in the corner, we're not gonna let him hide back there, but Tom does all the work on the technology piece. So Scott's first time through, Tom's last time through, so I don't know who is more excited. But that's the rundown of the capital outlay. And again, all the building administrative here, we can answer questions about specific projects, but you may have more questions, even, any that you have.
The shot clocks, is that something they're gonna be, start requiring next season?
I haven't heard yet.
Oh, okay.
My, my guess is that they will do something, uh, probably, they have a board meeting, I think, coming up. I, my gut feeling is they're gonna tell, tell everybody by a certain year, you're going to have to have it. I don't know that they would just do it in one year because the expense, especially with smaller schools. But I would, I would imagine they'll say by whatever season you're going to have to have.
It's coming, yeah.
Christian, there's concern if you wait until-